Okay, we're gonna open the April 29th Board of Selectmen's meeting. Open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. We have an appointment in a couple of minutes. Why don't we move Matt Senni up because Tom's here and we can talk to him first. Come on up. Tom, you wanna come up too?
Sure.
So you can see on your camera, we have some questions.
Thank you for letting me come and say hello to the board tonight. I'm Matthew Senni and I'm one of the principals down at River Bridge. And tonight, we're here to see if the town has any, would allow us to extend our hours, an extra hour during the week and an extra hour at 11 o'clock instead of 12 o'clock on Sunday and staying till from 6 to 7 on Sundays. So I think it's a total of an extra six or seven hours. But they, it's what the people want these days and part of it is they're coming down for pizza at 7:30, 8 o'clock at night and we're, we're running against trying to get coordinated. But everything, the hotel people tend to show up at 8 o'clock at night and they wanna, they wanna get a pizza and their six pack of beer.
Yep.
So that's our reason. And I filled out a form with Mary, I'm the principal.
Yes.
For the corporation. And I think you all wanted me to address the board, see if the chief had any, any comments.
No, there's no problems. I mean, we have later hours, I believe, at the Verk, at the Gulf. I'm not sure exactly what there is.
They're within, what the board's...
Yeah, there's been no issues there. I don't, I don't foresee any, any problems.
Okay. So here's the document and it just needs our signatures. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks for being a good neighbor on the trash pickup too.
All I had to do, all I had to see was that trench and I figured it out. And today, we went from the, I did, from the bridge to the trench. Cause there were some big items out there.
Yeah, there were like way the plastic, I don't know where it came from, if it was like across the road and flew in.
I, I see the labels. Some of it's in my hotel and some of it's from Northborough.
But no, very much appreciate you taking care of that.
I get news for you, I did it on purpose so that everybody in that building would see me do it. You know, some of it's leave by, by hand.
That is correct.
That's fine.
So the next time somebody will say, "Why doesn't he do it?", I've already done it.
The administrative, I'll fix the license for them to sign. That's really quick, next week's meeting and then I'll give it to you.
Okay.
Okay? I just didn't have enough notice.
Okay, no, we can do it next week. That'll be, that'll be great. I was already planning on coming to the meeting just to sit in the back room.
No, it's just they can be the signatures.
Okay.
Okay, thanks Ben.
Thank you again.
See you all next Monday.
All right.
Thank you chief.
No problem. How is everybody?
Good.
So I did, I have March and most of April for you to go over. So as we talked about the last couple of months, our electronic fingerprinting grant had been moving forward. The equipment is now in place and running. Now, it's just a matter of getting reimbursement from the federal government. So we've spent $20,000 out of pocket, that was, which is what the grant was. It's a reimbursement grant. So now, it's just a waiting game. Some grants are better than others, I'm guessing, because this is a federal grant. It's gonna take a little bit longer to get our, our reimbursement. So car three, which we've talked about several times as well, which has kinda been our gremlin vehicle, in March was back in service.
Nice.
Which is nice. But wait till I talk about April. And so they, they actually had to pretty much remove the entire dashboard. They found two wiring issues. Unfortunately, it's beyond the warranty, cause that vehicle's just about at end of life. It's probably gonna be about a thousand dollar repair. I'm guessing this is a vehicle that was probably built on a Friday in the summer. Just with the things that were coming up. You know, these were actually like factory, looks like issues that finally got worn through and caused, caused some problems. But it's been, that part's been resolved and that's a good thing. So at least we'll have a vehicle that has some value for a trade-in. Relatively quiet month in March and I think we can thank the weather for that. Generally, this, that time of year, we kinda get geared towards storms and motor vehicle related incidents. We didn't have a lot, so we were under 700 calls for the month. You know, only three arrests, seven involving criminal charges and only seven crashes. That's actually very, very good. A lot of them were kinda major. If you followed our Facebook page, there's a lot of, you know, pictures that show some major crashes, but not a lot of serious injury as a result. So that's been pretty good. We had one kinda tragic incident during the month. We have a group home here in town for people with traumatic brain injuries. And there was an incident where because of the person's injury, they weren't able to properly swallow their medication and ultimately, a few weeks later, they died as a result of that incident. So we've been working a joint investigation with that, with the state police. The state has deferred most of it to us and we work with DPPC, which is the Disabled Persons Protection Commission, that does a lot of the work with the people in that, in the group home. So there's been a number of investigations, or interviews that have had to be conducted with all the staff and everything that has revolved around that issue. So that really kinda covered March, April. So again, we're still waiting for our money. But car three is once again out of service. So unfortunately, now, these vehicles have a sealed electronic assist power steering, so you don't add power steering fluid to it. Not knowing if this is a result of the other electrical problems or what it is, but basically the electric motor on it burned out. It was a $14 to $1800 repair based on what dealership we took it to. You know, we, we use a lot of these type of aftermarket repairs at Wheeler's Garage. Brian didn't even wanna touch it because of the size of the job. We were fortunate, we were able to find used parts and we negotiated a price with MHQ, who's our, you know, our dealer for Ford. So it only cost us $600 to repair. So that's very good and that's gonna keep us running.
How much longer's it gotta go?
We get through town meeting and then, so what we, well, I have tentatively ordered, so I did the order early, even though we don't have to pay for it if we never get it cause it was part of MHQ's orders, for the 2020, which is a hybrid Ford interceptor. So a hybrid SUV for the next police vehicle. The assembly line is due to go online for Ford the first week in June. So it's probably gonna be August, September before these orders that, that MHQ has put in, come, come to MHQ and then it will be a matter of time of where we fall in the outfit line. So I'm hoping at the latest October, but earlier than that, because we got our, you know, what happens is most communities will come in and place their orders within the next few weeks after town meeting. I wanted to kinda get a jump on it where, hey, if we don't, if we don't have the money approved, we don't have to buy it anyway, so it's not a big deal. But at least we get in the queue earlier so that if, you know, if we can, things will get fixed sooner.
Will they tend to work on the bicycle or mounted police than how that car's doing?
Something. So it's been, it's been rough with just that car. You know, for the most part, all of them we've had have held up very, very well. This one has just had some issues. Like I said, you know, it's kinda that joke, it was a Friday car. So we're, we're getting through it. Again, not a very busy month with calls, you know, only a couple of arrests, 10 with criminal charges. We just conducted a joint training with the fire department, actually, this past weekend, an active shooter training at BMS. This is our second training for the police department at BMS. This was our first training with the fire department. We did a, kind of an introductory training with them just here in the building one day. You know, our hope is that we're gonna work towards a full-scale exercise. We know that if an incident like this occurs, there's gonna be a certain amount of chaos no matter what we do. But we have to have an idea of how we're gonna interact together. So that was a lot of what we're doing, is that we were working together in teams that would be used in a, in a serious case like this to basically extract the wounded from an area we, we've learned through the years and it got highlighted in Columbine and it's gotten, gotten better, but with some of the other recent cases, almost we've backpedaled. But that we can't follow our traditional policing methods where we wait until everything is safe to let the fire department go in and start to, you know, treat the wounded. So that we would actually bring them an area that is not 100% safe, but that we have somewhat secured and we, we call it a warm zone. So it's not where there's active gunfire or something like that, but it's an area where there is potentially still some danger, but they go in with our protection. So that's what we did, is we worked with them and how we will move and react together. Cause there's a lot for us to learn and to know whether we can send two EMTs firefighters in, or we have to send three or four, just depending on how it works. So we learned a little bit about how we work together and we're still gonna build towards a, a full-scale exercise.
Does Berlin, BMS have a, the SRC? The, what do they call it? Where's the guy in Tohonto? The...
SRO.
Yeah, thank you.
So, so Officer Goulding is our Dare Officer slash SRO. I mean, he's not, he doesn't have an office in the building and spend his entire day there, but he does actually teach a class. Plus, he spends a lot of time there. He's often there with the kids at lunchtime. He always goes up on his days on. He's always there in the morning when the buses are arriving. If he's working an afternoon shift, he's there when the buses are leaving. We have a very heavy presence and a great relationship with the school where they don't mind if we're in there at all.
No, I was just asking, cause unfortunately, on the news right before I left, there was an incident, you know, where the SRO, I forget where it was, sixth grade kids had a list.
Yep.
And it was because of the SRO overhearing the chatter.
And that's what it is, it's a lot, you know, with younger kids, it's generally not as bad as with, you know, the teen or tween kids where, that are really at a tough stage of their life in general, just with everything that's going on, hormones and, and peer pressure and bullying, everything that they have to deal with nowadays. Generally, with younger kids, we don't see that as much. We almost worry more about parental relationships and tough divorces and things that are going on that could spill into the school versus it generally being a child or a student. Or same with a teacher and spouse and something that may be going on. But, so we do have a presence there and, you know, with John as the principal, we're always welcome there, so it works out very, very well. So one thing you may have noticed this month is our uniforms changed a little bit. So Peg has a patch. I actually brought everybody a patch. Not everybody, but you can have another one.
Oh, I'll pull up my car, we'll just get in and have a checkup.
So it's Autism Awareness Month in April. So Detective Trungone has a son who's on the autism spectrum, so he takes it very personally. And we've done a lot with training for it. But he asked if this is something that we could do. So he spearheaded this. I authorized it that all officers could wear that as their uniform patch for this month. And it really, you know, for us, it's about raising awareness because what we've learned with incidents here and what we see on the news is that our traditional policing methods don't generally work with people that are on the autism spectrum. You know, when we try and take a forceful approach and try and control the situation, if we're dealing with someone on the spectrum and we're being, you know, loud and controlling, we're gonna get the exact opposite reaction that we're, we're hoping for. So that we hope that, you know, not only are we spreading awareness amongst ourselves, the rest of the community, but other police departments as well. And it really ended up being a great story that came out of this, just out of dumb luck. So April 2nd is, is actually National Autism Awareness Day. So one of our residents has a, I guess it's a great nephew who is on the autism spectrum. So he purchased one of our patches for him. So his mother, he, he lives in Clinton. His mother felt that because it was April 2nd, she would actually sew the patch onto his shirt that he was wearing to school that day. So he took his normal van pool bus to school. He goes to a special school in Worcester. And as he's on his way to school, his bus driver actually suffers a medical emergency. So he, you know, he was able to get him to the school. He noticed, he could hear him trying to call for help on the radio, but he, there was nobody responding. So one thing with, with kids that fall on the spectrum, routine is a very, very important thing. So this young man, Michael, got to school and, and the routine was, and the rules were, that you didn't go in the school before a certain time. So he got there and it was before that time, but, but he didn't wait. He reacted. He actually got kinda, almost spoken to by a teacher, like, "You can't do this", as he's running into the building. Made sure that 911 was called and that the gentleman received assistance and, and he lived. He actually had a heart attack and, and he survived.
Wow.
So, you know, what we didn't even realize is Fox 25 picked up this story. So I'm at home on, on April 3rd and I get an alert on my phone and it's Berlin. And I was just kinda, what's going on? Because if something's going on in Berlin, I don't know that's a problem. And it was, it was this, it was the start of this story. And it was, you know, and they interviewed Michael at his house and, you know, he spoke about what he did and everything and he said, "The reason I did it", and he points to his chest, he goes, "It's cause I had this patch and it gave me the confidence to, to act." So, so that's another positive that came out of it. There was a autism benefit that was scheduled about a week and a half later in West Boylston that Officer Trungone was, was attending. So we had a plaque made up for Michael. Harold Naughton had a citation for him and, you know, we were able to honor him there and really, you know, not only touch him, but reach some of the other, you know, kids and families that were, that were there that day. So really, it's been a great campaign that we have. It's something that we're hopefully gonna continue to do throughout the years. And, you know, in this case, it had a, really a great story that helps to spread that, that message, so.
So do you do, is there special training that the officers?
So all, most of our offices have been to at least one autism awareness class and things to look for and things to do, because there have been tragic events involving kids on the spectrum and adults on the spectrum and law enforcement. And our goal is actually to have Detective Trungone be an instructor for this in the future. So to not only instruct us and can instruct other people in the community, but other police officers across the state.
Great.
So.
And thank you for the blue light downstairs too.
Yes, so that's, that's, this is year two for the blue light downstairs. You know, it kinda fits in with everything we do. So, you know, we partner, you know, with, with school here in town. We partner with the Darnell School in Hudson and we have two students that come out every Thursday to, to do some work for us here.
Great.
So it all just kinda falls, falls in line and, you know, instead of, kinda don't want it to be something special we're doing, we want it to get to be something that we're doing normally.
Right.
And that's what our relationship with Darnell is kinda, is showing, so.
Great.
That is all.
Awesome.
We'll be back next month again.
So are you gonna save?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go back to... So let's see, this is the... Request for Board of Selectmen Authorization on Compliance Certificate, the sale of 64 Village Court and Affordable Housing Unit.
Were there some emails flying around? There seemed to be some unanswered questions.
I think the questions were answered at the end of the trail.
I think so too.
Well, the last one I saw was Lynn?
Yeah, but the fire marshal had done the appropriate inspections and I think we were good.
Okay.
Yeah, there was one after that, that was him.
All right.
So there's no more information to be added, correct, Mary?
Well, really, a building inspector hasn't chimed in on this at all.
Do we, do we need to do this tonight then? I know the closing is coming up?
The closing was today.
Oh.
But that's really not the town's problem, that they didn't give that to us with any adequate time. This has been DHCD and the owner of this unit, Mrs. De Silva, didn't really resolve it. They let this go forward advertised as living space in the attic. That's how it was advertised, so. The only reason why we would know anything about it is DHCD flagged this in November for her to straighten this out and it, it never did get straightened out.
If the building inspector hasn't been there, I'd feel more comfortable with a sign-off by everybody, but that's just me.
Is it common practice for the building inspector to go, I mean, because...
No, but DHCD also usually doesn't have an issue where they have the as-built plans and they know that the living space in the attic, it's not meant to be living space. DHCD usually doesn't have an issue, but they flagged that.
Okay, but I, I think, I guess, I think the fire marshal also said, "It's not a living space. We, we can't really..."
There's no way to police it?
There's no way to police it. I'm not sure, I mean, if you want, we can have the building inspector go in, but I'm not sure that accomplishes anything, cause what he's gonna see is a finished upstairs.
I think you could possibly...
And he's gonna come back and say, "It's a finished upstairs" and according to the covenant, nobody can live up here. I'm not sure it accomplishes anything to wait, but we can if you want.
You could approve it tonight, conditioned on the building inspector going to it tomorrow and seeing that it's okay. That would still allow her to get this on record tomorrow if it's okay. Or you could, you know, let it all hang on what the building inspector says.
That's fine.
Cause then if it's, it's a problem or it's not a problem. And then it still gets out the door tomorrow.
All right.
Yeah, I'm fine with Lisa's suggestion, unconditional approval.
Okay, so do I hear that motion?
It's approved.
Okay.
So seconded?
Second?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and this has to be notarized, so...
Elise knows.
Elise will do that tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay. All right, reserve on transfer. The present balance is $5,509.
Is this for legal?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Well, what, it's not filled in. Do you wanna...
For how much do we need to go? How much do we need to go?
Mary, you were guessing about $10,000?
Oh, that's much too late. I'm just saying if they wanna keep eking along.
How much-ish, guess?
Yeah, I don't know. You'd have to know where we stand on paying the different monthly bills.
Well, we still have the end of July where we can move money from...
Yeah, the June.
Uh, June, not July, sorry.
EMT, EMT, every time it comes down on the floor.
Um, yeah, but we've gotta have some ways to take it.
Right. And you probably have no idea right now anyway, so.
Yeah. But as of right now, you don't have enough money to pay the bill that just came in, right?
Right.
I don't think so.
Not quite, I don't think.
10 minimum.
That might get you two months.
Oh, no.
Because you're getting, it's not even gonna cut. Well, you've got, you've got $5,000 right now.
Not with what's prepared town council already, no.
Well, let's see, what is it? It's May 1st tomorrow, May...
Well, no, you, you just got, that was March bill, right? That just came in?
Yeah, I think that was March. I don't, you know...
So you've got April, May, June, so you've got three months worth.
Okay.
That includes Weston, Sampson, KP Law.
And you still have a lot of stuff going on with town meeting.
Yep.
Well, what do we say, 15?
15. 15 to 18.
I mean, I would try to at least do the, for at least two months, cause then the last month, we can see what the bill comes in at.
Well, it's averaging a little over like six, around $6,000.
Then just do simple math, just do 18-ish.
Okay, six and six is 18?
Yeah, but no, no, April, May, April, May, June.
Okay, okay.
Can they strike it down to 15?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you can, you can ask for whatever and then the last month, if we don't have enough, let's go back.
What do you think?
It's gotta be done before the last one, it's gonna be...
Yeah, let, let's do 15 and then we'll have to have another one anyways to finish it out, right? But that'll get us through two months.
Cause if you have 15, that would be about 20.
Most likely.
Hopefully, yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna put 15 here. Do I hear a motion to approve? $15,000.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's a clerk, a clerk.
A clerk. A clerk.
We have a request from the audience. Can you speak up a little bit, please?
Sorry. $15,000 on the reserve transfer fund for legal to cover the months of April, May and June with our balance should get us through the next three. And if there's some leftover, we'll figure out what to do with it and if we need to borrow, June will work our magic. Good? Okay. And I signed it.
Maybe we all need to learn...
Sign language?
Yeah.
No, we just need to learn to speak up.
I know.
You need to learn to project. Especially the low-voiced people.
I know.
Okay, Denny? You had asked, yeah, come on up.
Good evening.
No, yeah, just sit there so the camera can pick it up and then so that the audience can hear you.
Really?
Yes.
Oh.
Well...
There you go.
I talk softly.
Wait, you can't talk softly, cause I don't wanna repeat what you're saying.
Oh.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to be, come up, whatever, on the flyback.
Seen your work off?
Work off.
Yeah.
Start cleaning up some of the telephone poles and signs that ain't supposed to be there.
So have you noticed there's a lot of signs?
I've noticed, yes, it's...
What types of signs? What types of signs?
Well, let's see, you got real estate signs, you got I buy houses and you got wrestling signs and, um, all sorts of signs. And you have to put up poles, which is illegal.
So should there be anything on the poles?
Nothing on the poles.
Really? Okay.
They have to be self-standing, correct?
The signs?
Yeah, and then they gotta, you know, like, there's some for, like, rural country club. They have to come to you folks to get permission to put a sign in the easement.
Oh, so you're gonna do some research and, and on those things, sir?
Well, I kinda must know what's going on.
Yeah. Okay.
And they can't put any signs in a tree. Period.
All right, we're not talking enforcement though, right? You're just talking about cleaning it up? Is that what I'm understanding?
Enforcing. Well, if they're...
You're not, you wouldn't be a sign officer. That's not what you're asking.
Well, I'm gonna have to be if I'm gonna start taking stuff off the poles.
You wanna be limited to right-of-way type stuff.
Yeah.
Town right-of-way and not signs on businesses and...
Oh, no, no.
Okay. I'm just not sure, cause the...
Right now, you've got boundary down there, they've got off-site signs. Real estate cannot have off-site signs.
Okay, so you are...
You're just gonna bring them to our attention then?
Why can't if you wanna do that?
Well, the problem is that if, if he's trying to be a sign officer, our zoning bylaws don't... We have a sign officer, it's our building inspector. And you can't assign somebody else to be a sign officer unless you go to town meeting, based on what I found in the zoning bylaws.
Really? Cause I was at for years when I was a highway superintendent.
I have, right here, uh, the zoning enforcement officer is hereby designated as a sign officer and is hereby authorized to enforce this bylaw. The sign officer is authorized to order the repair or removal of any sign and its supporting structure, which is judged dangerous or in disrepair, which is erected or maintained contrary to this bylaw. Whenever a sign officer is designated, that person or board should notify the State Outdoor Advertising Board. But then you go to zoning enforcement officer and this bylaw shall be enforced by the zoning But then you go to zoning enforcement officer, and this bylaw shall be enforced by the zoning enforcement officer in the manner prescribed by chapter forty A of the general laws of Massachusetts. Unless otherwise designated by town meeting, the zoning enforcement officer shall be the building inspector. So basically, you have a, the sign officer is the zoning enforcement officer who is the building inspector.
Right now, yeah.
That's right in our zoning bylaws.
Mm-hmm.
So you can't really assign somebody else to be a sign officer.
Can, can you, would he be able to make them, make the building inspector aware of the issues?
I mean.
And then, and then just say, I'd like to take this down, I'd like to take that down?
Well, he would, then if it was at the ass to, the way the game wants to be played, he's gonna have to go and stake him down.
Unless he asks Dennis to do it?
I mean, yeah, it's really the request for work off, if this was gonna happen, should come from the building inspector, but yeah, we already have a sign officer. And according to the bylaws, we can't make somebody else one.
And apparently, he's, isn't doing the job.
Well, I mean, we can bring it to his attention, we can ask if he wants to have help, I'm just, this is, this is our zoning bylaw.
Yeah, whatever.
So why don't we, why don't we bring this to the building inspector's attention then?
That's, that's fine, that makes sense.
And see? Yeah. And see what he would like to do.
'Cause I mean, I did it, and Keith Clumwood did it.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, they, you know, if I tell them, they take a sign down.
Yeah, when, when did this go into effect?
Um, I, I just pulled the relevant out of the zoning, you can certainly go look at the zoning bylaws, but
Okay. All right.
I looked at them today just to find out, 'cause I wanted to know what a sign officer did, and all of that sort of stuff, and this is what I found.
Okay.
See, back there, it was Larry was the.
Building guy.
The building guy, and he would tell me to take signs down.
Yeah, and that maybe, you know.
Within the right of way. Within the right-of-way, correct.
Yeah.
If it was on a tree, as tree warden back then, I got to take them down, or call you up and say, you gotta get your sign out of the tree, or I'm gonna take you to court tomorrow morning.
Okay.
It's twenty dollar, twenty, start of a twenty-dollar fine.
Wow.
Yeah, so, I mean, my guess is we just need to clarify what's going on with the building inspector and the highway.
With the building inspector. All right. Is that okay with you?
Yeah, that's fine.
Do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll send an email to both email addresses, Dave and interim building inspector and ask what they wanna do.
Dave?
Well, he was talking highway.
Oh, okay, yes.
And then, um, Richard.
Mm-hmm.
And then, when.
So you're, you're saying your definition of the coding enforcement is the building inspector?
It is the building inspector, if he's the enforcement officer.
So technically, Dave can't even do it.
So it's Richard.
Yeah.
So it's Richard for the interim until Joe returns?
That doesn't, the zoning bylaws not talk about signs within the public way. They talk about signs on businesses.
Well, why don't we get some kind of clarification from the building inspector?
Yeah, I think either way, it needs to come from the building inspector.
Signs is part of a b- a building, a project, some kind of site plan approval or something like that.
But the bylaw also covers other types of signs, too, so it's a, it's a whole section.
Right, I mean, you got. You got, you got a telephone pole down there by the gas station at four ninety-five, it's got probably six, seven signs nailed to it. And you can't put a sign on a telephone pole.
Mm-hmm.
Plain and simple, I mean, it's, if you don't own the pole, you can't put nothing on it.
We don't own the pole.
Huh?
We don't own the pole.
Correct.
The town doesn't own the pole.
Correct.
Well, what, let's get some clarification from the building inspector, see what he has to say. Can we do that?
Can we get, can we get the process too? I mean, is it, is it just going up to the pole and ripping it down, or is it finding out, like, if it, it references, we buy ugly houses, that? Well, it's the only one that comes to mind, you know, that you call the business and say, we've taken it down, here's your warning, I'll send you a letter.
Don't do it again.
It comes up again, it's a fine. How big's the fine? Do we have a fine associated with this?
The telephone poles, we don't own them.
Do you know? Oh. Okay. So we just, we're just gonna rip them down then?
Right.
Okay.
The companies don't want them on the poles.
Well, I wouldn't imagine so.
See the issue, I think, with the telephone poles, which it's.
Oh, I can imagine.
The stuff out of it, like the nails are those stupid.
And has, has he already gone through council and aging? I mean, they're the ones that actually set up the initial work off.
Yeah, well, normally the way it goes is, is the department in town requests, and then it sends it to council and aging, who then makes a match.
The interim sends it to council of aging.
Right.
Right.
Unless they have somebody in mind, so, yeah, normally you don't have somebody, you're special, normally people don't just come in and.
I filled out the form they told me to fill out.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah. Yeah, he did.
Yeah, but normally there would, normally there would be a request from the department.
I don't know who gets it.
Okay. And where Richard didn't know, okay.
Yeah, and then it's, it starts to rely.
All right, all right, and you had something else you wanna talk to us about?
The, uh, intersection of Woodward Ave and Ca- uh, Cotta Street. Back when I was superintendent, we had a letter, I didn't bring my letter with me, but there's five trees or so were supposed to have been removed, and the four-by-four right on the edge of the pavement was supposed to be removed. And I told my predecessor, and it probably got forgotten.
Mm-hmm.
But they're getting, oops, thank you. Um, they're getting big, they're gonna be blocking the intersection for coming out of Woodward Ave. And if they're still there, the town could get a lawsuit.
That looks like another thing that, I think Mary sent them over, didn't she?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
All right.
Um, this sounds like another enforcement issue where, that we need to send over to the building inspector.
No, 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 no.
No?
You mean the.
It's you, it's you three have got to enforce the.
Violation.
Violation, 'cause it's within the town's easement.
Yeah, but I think he is the one who goes to the house and talks about enforcement. We don't go over and talk about enforcement, that would be because he's violating a bylaw, correct?
You, you s-
He's violating a bylaw.
Originally, originally, the Board of Selectmen sent these folks a letter.
Because they're violating a bylaw.
Correct.
And the building inspector's job is to do enforcement on our bylaws. So he would go in, he would go and talk to them.
Back then, it was me. And because it was a tree, as a tree warden, you can c- could cut it down, and the block of woods that he put on the edge of the shoulder was supposed to be removed. Um, I go back, I can't remember what year it was, but a lady on Gates Pond Road put flat rocks standing straight up and down.
Against the road?
Right against the road, similar to what's up there.
Mm-hmm.
We were, highway was told to, by the Board of Selectmen, was told to remove them, which we did. The only violation that we did at the time, nobody knew it, we took the stones and brought them to the dump. If we'd left them on the property.
You would've put them back up?
No, they, they couldn't have put them back up, but we couldn't have got.
It was, he took their property.
Yeah.
You, you can't take people's property.
Right.
Right.
You can remove it from your, yeah.
But as the trees, the tree warden can cut the trees down. 'Cause you have, the Board of Selectmen have so ordered to take those trees down.
Nobody's, has anybody had any, um, communication with these people since?
That was right, that's when I was lea- leaving, and I told Keith about it.
Right.
And apparently, he forgot.
Yeah.
And the trees are getting bigger and bigger and bigger and bigger.
Yeah, 'cause you're talking seven years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
So once again, I think it, I think it needs to go over to the building inspector.
We may wanna touch base with Dave too, just to see if he's had any, if he's spoken with anybody there at the property about this or not, no?
I'm sure. I'm guessing, I'm guessing he's probably had his hands full with.
Maybe not. Well, we did have something else that came from this. Um, this address, I believe. Um.
There was a damage claim this winter.
Oh, that's right, we had an insurance claim. They were claiming that we had, uh,
There was a damage claim, yeah.
I don't know if it had anything to do with the same thing though.
It, it did, it allegedly damaged the, uh, curbing that they installed, and they, but they didn't witness the town trucks doing it, so
Yeah.
Okay.
The town, the board denied reversing.
But why, if this has been sent first, then.
Yeah, but that was in two thousand twelve.
Right.
Right.
That, that letter went to in two thousand and twelve.
People weren't aware of it. Right.
And nothing was done. I mean, there's been other incidents where I'd come to the board, that people had put rocks within the town easement. And they would say, either move it, or we will move them.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, right from the Board of Selectmen, we didn't, the, the building inspector never got involved in it.
Yeah, but I, I suspect they should as the enforcement officer for the bylaws, that's, that's their job.
What do you wanna do?
So, you want us to follow up on this essentially?
So.
Right, 'cause somebody's gonna get hurt, and then the town's gonna be.
Yeah, we can absolutely do that, I think it has to go to.
Yeah.
You can certainly copy Dave in, but I think it starts with the building inspector.
Okay, why don't we, why don't we do, start there?
There you go.
All right.
So that's all I get to.
All right.
So we should be able to get, no.
Okay.
So we should be able to get back to, uh, Mr. Bartlett, what, in a week? On the whole sign enforcement officer?
Hopefully, yeah, we'll get back to you. We'll let you know how it's going.
We know where you live.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, good night.
Thanks, Mr. Bartlett.
Thanks, Mr. Bartlett.
All righty. All right, we're up to the annual town meeting update. Um, we've determined that we're gonna have Janelle Austin on the first night, and Jonathan Eichman for the second night from KP Law. Um.
And the second lawyer is well versed.
In the marijuana.
Okay.
Um, did you see the email I just sent you right before I came?
Probably not. Last time I looked at the email was around four thirty.
Did.
I had a phone call from Ornella about five thirty. She was going to come and ask to speak. Um, I told her, essentially, she wanted to know if Barry was gonna be speaking with Jonathan Eichman before the town meeting on Tuesday night. Could she sit in to hear, to listen to
The discussion?
what the process, what the process would be for town meeting. The clarification of, um, how the town meeting would go. Um, and I said that I would bring that to you all, um, and it wasn't really necessary for her to come. So, I'm looking for feedback on that. That would be the seventh, the Tuesday. I'm assuming Barry's still going to meet with Jonathan beforehand to figure out the plan, the process.
So is any of that discussion, like, client confidential, Town of Berlin, or is it just a general, hey, here's what I know, hey, here's what I understand? I mean, what's, what's the conversation going to be about?
Um, I would assume it would be about
Process, right?
The process, about how the meeting should be run for that particular article.
I, I want everything to go smoothly, but I also wanna be careful, because town legal isn't for citizen petitions.
Right, right. And I explained that to her. I'm not quite sure she understood, but I did explain it to her. Um, how he is counsel for the town.
Right.
It would be a conflict for him
To guide her.
To guide her personally, or for her coalition, as she calls it.
Can I suggest you ask the attorney?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that's fine. I mean, I'm okay with her sitting in and potentially listening, but I'm not okay with her asking any sort of question either to Mr. Agar or to KP Law.
All right.
You know, Barry, he can handle what, what he has to do, but town legal's a different thing. If, if Barry wants to have a conversation with Ornella, then he's welcome.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
All right.
Or may I ask the attorney?
Do you wanna ask the attorney?
Yeah, I'd rather feel safer.
Just to say she's requested to sit in on this?
The board defers to your opinion. If the, if he says that he's neutral on it, did, then do you have an opinion?
I don't have a problem with her sitting in.
Yeah, just sitting in.
Yeah.
That's it. Lisa, what do you think?
Yeah, I did, I just, yeah. I, I guess for me, it's, the legal's for Barry, and if Ornella has questions about process, then she goes to Barry, but.
Agreed, but the three of them are going to be there in a room, so.
Well, that may be end up how it ends up, is, uh, the attorney and Barry
Meet.
will make decisions on how the process will go, and it needs to be shared with her. Um, she may not agree with it. Um.
All right.
Why don't, why don't we get and let Barry know this also? Um, and then we can get, I told Ornella I would get back to her.
Don't copy Ornella on this?
No.
No, I don't think so. I think, I think, yeah, and I told her I would get back to her either tomorrow, or when we had the information.
All right, so it's Barry. Okay.
So, we need to make a decision that if town, town council says it, it's up to the selectmen. Our opinion is town council talks to Barry, Barry talks to Ornella?
That seems to make sense, I mean, because the, Barry is the one who runs town meeting, it's really,
Follow the process. Correct.
Yeah, it's really his show. He gets counsel from legal, but it's his show, so
Okay.
how that's actually gonna go is, is up to him, the
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
The advice he gets from counsel is how he interprets or takes that is
All right.
is up to him.
Then I'm all right with that process. Barry and KP Law, and then Barry and Ornella.
Okay.
Okay.
So you don't need the attorney's opinion then, because you're agreeing that you'd rather it just be directly the town moderator or town council?
I think she just wanted to sit in when they had this conversation.
They would probably pull her in if they felt they needed her.
And, you know, that's.
And again, as you said, town council is town council, town council is not citizens' petition, so I don't know what Ornella would get out of it.
I, probably no surprises is all she would get out of it, that's my guess. I think we should still
Talk with them.
Talk, just let Attorney Eichman know that she's, well, I don't know. I don't know if that makes sense either.
How about no? If, if the three of us can't figure out Plan A, Plan B, or Plan C, no.
I, I would, I would concur, just because, like I said, I think it's Barry's show. It's, he's the one who, as moderator, runs town meeting.
Okay.
So if there, if she has questions, then it's.
She is gonna go to him.
That, I think, makes sense.
Well, perhaps Barry could fill her in.
Yes, so we'll leave that up to Mr. Agar, but yeah, no, she can't sit.
'Cause that's not really, I mean, once, once you get to that stage, that's not our show.
We're out. Right, we're out.
That's the moderator's show.
Mm, okay.
Good.
Okay.
You can call her back and say, we deliberated, we decided.
Yep.
No. Okay.
All right. Moving on, do we have any other, do we have any other updates?
Well, yeah, there.
Yeah, oh, yeah, we have to go through the, do we need to go?
Well, you don't, you can assign yourselves motions on the night of, or you can, you do have draft motions.
Right.
Um, but the other thing before you do motions is there, there seem to be some misprints in the, um, warrant that is in the annual town report online, which is coming off the presses tomorrow or Wednesday.
Okay.
The only one that seems to have, that I could see just from skimming, 'cause this all came to light late in the day, is that there's one revolving account that has the wrong amount stated in it. It's not the version that was signed by the selectmen, it's a month earlier version of the warrant, so I'm not sure, Barry's not sure how that got in there, so.
Can we just amend it on the floor?
I don't know, because it's amending it upward, but I don't know if that matters for revolving account. It, what went into the report is twenty-five thousand, when we changed it per evie to the last month before it got signed, up to forty thousand.
It, it doesn't matter how it happened, it's in there, so now we need to solve the problem.
So the question is, does it matter?
Jim, did you have something that you?
Normally, in the past, we have not been able to increase things, because you haven't given it to the townspeople to, to
Review and comment.
To review.
And this is what's being mailed.
So. I don't know, that may be a legal council.
It is a question for town council. Do you want me to ask town council? Do you want me to ask town council?
'Cause I, we may have to do this, and then if we have a special town meeting, address it later.
Okay. That's fine with me, okay?
I'm good.
The other things are just missing headers in, um, to articles, that's nothing substantive, so.
Okay.
But noted, so I'm not sure what else is in there, lest we go side by side and really review what else is in there, but the biggest thing was June five.
I was gonna go to, try to do that tomorrow, once I get my stuff done, that I have to get done for town meeting.
Again, the version that you signed is right.
Okay.
So it's what got into the annual town report that's wrong.
Alright, we'll work on that, so do we go through and just assign these and whiz through them?
You can decide.
If you do that.
Snow and ice, 'cause Dave isn't a resident, number one. That's the warrant.
Right.
Okay, but the motions are in a separate printout. Yeah.
Is that underneath here?
Yeah, you can get it right there, in the yellow.
Alright. Alright. So, snow and ice is gonna be the highway department.
But Dave, well, Dave can speak to it, but we have to introduce it, correct?
Right, yep.
I'll take it, I'm on the end.
You're on the end?
Well, the way that we said, I'll do it, so you're not climbing over us.
Okay, Article Two.
Two through six.
Right.
And we just go down the row?
Yeah.
Chris, take that one?
And it would be the school committee that would do seven. Um, outstanding reports, Lisa, do you wanna do that one?
Lisa, good seat. And finance. And then I'll take ten, 'cause it's highway again, we'll have to come back up, if we have to.
The trustees will do alone. Rajal, do twelve. Peggy Spender.
Cable, you wanna try to do it?
I think, uh, Pat will.
Pat will, okay. And the library to, trustees will do thirteen, Florida Health does fourteen. Um, Cemetery Commission does fifteen, Council on Aging will do sixteen.
Are they keeping it?
What's that?
The hard, yeah.
Sixteen.
Holly will be there to speak to that.
Yeah. Um, and seventeen is the highway superintendent again.